Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is Leslie Harris. I am one of the commissioners for the OPEC public hearing today. We will be going through an agenda with first my of the co-chair. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, Peter Alvarez, co-chair of the OPEC Commission. Lovely to see everybody today. Thank you for joining.
Thank you, Peter. And then we will have a review of the OPEC Regulation 1.00. Will be open for public comment. And at 1 o'clock, we will adjourn. Well, I guess basically right now that the two of us are alternating as the pro team chair of the OPEC Commission until we get a new director. This hearing is open for the public to attend. It is being recorded through Zoom. If any members of the public reviewing this recording need a transcript to follow along, please reach out to the OPEC staff. Public comment will be held during this meeting. You're also welcome to submit any comments that you have to oped board at boston.gov and they will be added to the public record. This morning, we will run through the agenda that you can see on the screen. We will briefly review the OPEC regulations. And then we will open the floor for public comment. We are considering the following set of regulations for adoption. Setting an investigative standard of proof. This section clarifies the standard of proof to be used by OPEC staff. Duplication of complaints. This section states that OPEC will not run simultaneous investigations if the complainant has a pending complaint with either the Boston Police Department or the peace officer standards and training called post-commission. Incomplete commission complaints. This section defines what is considered an incomplete complaint and lays out the steps that OPEC staff will take to collect the missing information in a complaint, including a timeline. This section also clarifies that a complaint that has been closed due to non-contact may be reopened by the complainant upon request. And I would add completing the missing parts. Conflicts arising with within board participation. This section clarifies the process. Should a conflict of interest arise with the civilian within the civilian review board or internal affairs oversight panel, including a timeline. Board calendars. This section states that the OPEC Commission shall set the meeting calendar for all OPEC boards in December or the following calendar year. And number six, youth advisory council. This section lays out the creation of the youth advisory council, including its scope, purpose, and benefits. We will not open the meeting to public comment. There are two ways to submit public comment at today's meeting. If you are in the Zoom meeting, please raise use the raised hands icon to indicate that you would like to speak. You will get a notification to unmute yourself. Once you have unmuted yourself, you will be able to speak. If you are in Zoom, you may not submit comments using the chat function and the chair will read them into the, I'm sorry. And the chair will read them into the record. If you unable unable to provide public testimony in the Zoom, you can submit your comments by email to opedboards@boston.gov. Emails received during the meeting will be read over the record. Emails received after the meeting will be included as part of the public record. You may not discuss any pending case during this time. That is very important. Please keep your comments brief so that all participants can have the chance to speak. Please identify yourself before providing public comment. Do we have any raised hands at this time?
Judge Anne Marie Grant has raised her hand.
May we bring her in, please? Please state your name before your remarks, please.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Grant. My brother, Thomas Purdy was 38 years old when he was murdered by police in Reno, Nevada. I'd like to play an interaction my 18-year-old nephew had with Boston police. There it is.
We cannot do that.
Why is that? It's public comment. If I was in person, I wouldn't be allowed to play this video.
No, because
Why is that?
Because this is not for individual cases. This is strictly discussion on the
I haven't filed a case.
That's my point.
Who said I want to file a case? I just want to share with the public how a Boston police officer spoke to my nephew.
No, ma'am.
Okay, it's clear that your board is just all mirrors. Thank you.
Anne Marie, please, please, I'm on the civilian review board. Could you please submit a complaint? We'd love to
I have every intention of doing that.
Oh, yes, please. And you can submit it on his behalf. He's your nephew and the person themselves doesn't have to submit it. Please submit it. We would love to investigate the case and look into it like that. Just want to make that clear. We would love to look into the case for you.
Okay, I will, because the intimidation tactics used against him by a sergeant were actually pretty disgusting. He's already been traumatized having his father killed by the police. So thank you, I will submit that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. We really want you to do that. Any other hands raised, please?
Judge, no hands raised at this point.
Well, we will keep the Zoom open. And we will check regularly to see if there are any hands raised. Thank you for jumping in and clarifying that she can file that report with the CRB. I do not want people to think that we're not welcoming. We just can't hear comments about possible pending cases at this time.
Yeah, and just to clarify too, for anyone on, it's basically, you know, the investigatory process needs to play out and, you know, videos or voices or even names of officers being used before the investigation takes place just isn't really part of the process and actually, you know, would be much better undertaken if done, you know, the formal channels of filing the complaint, having the investigation conducted. And just want to make sure anyone that's do so, and just to clarify, make a complaint on behalf of someone else as a witness, as a bystander, be a relative, even if they do not want to make a complaint. Obviously, if the person who, you know, is the like, the person subject to any of the actions, if they are not willing to speak, that also like affects the investigatory process. But video, audio, things of that nature can remedy some of those deficiencies in terms of like not being able to interview that person. So again, everyone can file complaints as a bystander, as a witness. If you have video or audio, submit that as well, which is helpful in instances where, you know, the person subject to the action isn't willing to to like be interviewed. You know, and audio is very helpful, especially in those circumstances. I think Commissioner Harris, one thing just like, just for anyone who's joining and comes in from time to time. You know, Commissioner Harris and I will be here sometimes off camera, but we will be like tuned in for the period of time for the for the entirety of the meeting. That way, anyone who hops in to the meeting can make their public comment with both of the commissioners existing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, we have a hand raised from a Dan Purdy.
Okay, Mr. Purdy, you will be unmuted. Please keep your comments on point.
Yes. I would just like to know why we allow the police to investigate the police.
That is a question that has been raised nationally. But that is not part of this. It is a thing that we should discuss. It is a point that needs to be discussed. It is a point that need to be discussed with our city council. It is a point that needs to be discussed with the mayor, with the governor. But unfortunately, we are limited to the regulations as they are written at this time.
So what is the point of the panel?
Our panel, our point, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to chime in. I think part of it is is actually taking some of the investigatory parts of police policing themselves. We can get complaints upon first impression where they don't even go to the police department, where the public files a complaint, you know, with this with OPEC, where the investigatory process goes underway. So in those instances, it's not the police like policing or investigating themselves. And I think one of the things, you know, just kind of going back
Well, it's a government, it's a government agency investigating another government agency, correct?
Uh, yeah, but that would be the case.
Okay, well, that answers it right. That is still the
Every, every government agency. I would push back on that in the sense that like, I'm not a police officer at all. So I don't think, I think the amount of sunshine for given, like meaning visibility, was something that never existed before. People didn't know when people had complaints against the police, there was no data collected. There was no avenue for anyone to make a complaint against a police department that wasn't within a police department before. We've gotten some sustained cases and some in which the commissioner even agree with with our recommendation. So I think, you know, it's a, it's a national issue as, as Commissioner Harris mentioned. But I think we're working towards kind of at least getting more sunshine, getting more accountability, getting more kind of independence in the investigation. People that are not part of law enforcement, you know, looking at the cases and making determinations and recommendations. And, you know, that's, as Judge Harris mentioned and Commissioner Harris, that that's, we have to adhere to what our mandate is. Here is, as mentioned earlier, the public comments on the regulations. But, you know, we understand sometimes people have general questions and
So you can make, all you guys can do is make recommendations, correct?
Correct. Make recommendations to Commissioner and subpoena and
Well, if he ever, if the commissioner ever takes any advice from the board that was disbanded and then re-put together, I'll be shocked. But thank you very much for answering
He did, he took the recommendation. Wait, just so you know, he, he Yeah, no, he did take, just, just so you know, he did take a recommendation recently, so.
Did he put it into effect?
I believe so.
Well, believe and knowing are two different things.
I think it's something, okay. Appreciate it. Appreciate your comment and I appreciate your presence at the meeting. It's really important. It's great to hear from members of the public.
Well, I appreciate you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's these types of insights that we need to continue and we need to hear from the public and about their concerns, about our legitimacy and about the work that we do. So thank you. Do we have any other hands raised?
Commissioners, no hands raised at this point.
I am going to mute myself at this time.
Dr. Gasko, and I noticed you had your hand up briefly. Did you have a comment? Okay, no problem. Just want to check.
Thank you, John.
No problem.
Judge Harris, Anne Marie Grant has her hand raised again.
Yes, ma'am. Please let her make a comment.
Hi, I was just actually wondering where I can find the proposed regulations to take a look at them. I did try to find them before the meeting, but I couldn't seem to find them. Could anybody direct me to them?
Judge, I actually dropped the, the regulations in the chat, so they should be accessible there.
Were they available online before the meeting?
They were, they were available on the public notice page as well.
Okay, I just can't. So I'll look for it on there. Thank you, I'll look, because I don't see it in the chat. Sorry, thank you.
Judge Harris, we have a, a comment in the chat. Would you like me to read it into the record?
Yes, ma'am, please.
It's a comment from Danielle Gaskon. Hi, everyone. Thanks for this meeting. Curious about 1.02. Why not run, quote, parallel investigations, end quote? Doesn't the OPEC want to act as a check on BPD's internal investigations?
I think pointing would be to point people into the direction
Peter, you're breaking up.
Having those be complaints directly to us. I think we would want those to be complaints directly to us, to the civilian review board, rather than have them go assess, like, we have to wait until afterwards. And then the internal affairs panel will see any disposition thereafter. So we recommend for people to make the complaint just on, to the civilian review side. So there isn't any confusion.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could jump in there as well. So the ordinance lays out that we are not to run parallel investigations and interfere with any sort of investigations being done by law enforcement, anything in the courts. So that's something that we're, we're following by ordinance. That's the beauty of our process. If you don't file first with us and allow the civilian review board to ultimately take a look at it, we can, you know, you have the ability to appeal any decision that you do receive at BPD if you don't think that it was fair, thorough.
Judge and Chair Alvarez, I'm not sure if you're right by your microphone at the moment. I just wanted to suggest that because we haven't had anyone enter the meeting or raise their hand in the last 30 minutes or so, that maybe we give another 15 minutes for anyone else to join and ask questions and then probably conclude the meeting. Just want to put that out there.
I don't disagree with you, but I don't want to break the rules, so.
Yeah.
But any other can be posted, so I don't think it's a problem.
Yeah, I think that that's the reason I propose it. And I think this is similar to what the city council does. So I think we'd be fine to do it this way.
Okay, so let's hear 1215. If there's no further hand raising or comments sent in, we will adjourn and keep the comment period open. Thank you.
Judge and Chair Alvarez, I'm not sure if you're right by your microphone at the moment. I just wanted to suggest that because we haven't had anyone enter the meeting or raise their hand in the last 30 minutes or so, then maybe we give another 15 minutes for anyone else to join and ask questions and then probably conclude the meeting. Just wanted to put that out there.
I don't disagree with you, but I don't want to break the rules, so.
Yeah.
But any other comment can be posted, so I don't think it's a problem.
Yeah, I think that's the reason I proposed it. I think this is similar to what the city council does, so I think we'd be fine to do it this way.
Okay, so let's hear 1215. If there's no further hand raising or comments sent in, we will adjourn and keep the comment period open. Thank you. There be no further comments and no further hand raised. I will call for an adjournment of the meeting. Peter, are you available?
Yes, I second that motion.
Okay, and we both agree?
Yes, so second the motion.
The public meeting at this point has ended. Thank you to the staff and thank you, Peter.
Thank you, thank you, Judge. Thank you, everyone who joined. Appreciate it.